Heaven's hard to... So we have Jason, myself, Callie and Ray. I think John will be here momentarily around 7 o'clock, so we'll move on without him. And so we'll start with public comment, and we have at least one person to speak about it too. So you want to come on up to the table? Bring a chair, roll a chair.
Okay, so my name is Kristin Rogers. I live on Conti Court, so Waterbury side. And I submitted my letter of interest for the open school board seat to represent Moretown. I trust that you guys had gotten my letter of interest. If not, I do have copies of it just to cover the bases. So I wanted to come tonight just so you could kind of have a face to a name of who I was. As you've read my letter of address for 15 years. My son is currently a student over at Moretown. I submitted my letter of interest because I really felt that somebody who's been in the community for a significant amount of time, who has a child in the school system, I thought that was really important to potentially, hopefully, fill that empty seat. And I've been attending all of the school board meetings pretty much since February, as well as community engagement committees. So I feel like I'm kind of up to speed on what's been going on. I just felt like it was really important to have another voice for the town. And of course, everybody in the school district. Because I do have a child that's in the school system, I felt that that was important because of all the things that are coming down. Having to do with the middle school, with that meeting tomorrow, and the other issues that could be coming down the pipeline as well. I just felt that it was important to have another voice. That's kind of, I just wanted to...
Have you run for that position before?
No.
When is that going to happen?
No. You know, I did vote for Peter. You know, I thought that he was doing a really good job, so I did vote for him. And then, you know, his letter came out, which we're all surprised about. But having gone to the meetings, I see what was on there. So that's why I am here today.
Oh, well, we certainly appreciate you coming. So that everyone knows, and I'm sure we do, but just for the public. The select board has an opportunity to comment to the supervisory meeting as far as the candidates. So we should be receiving all who has submitted a letter of interest. And then we'll be able to make comments back to the supervisory meeting, to those. And they will certainly make their decisions. But hopefully, you know, they'll take whatever we have to say into consideration. So I'll, you know, open it up. If anyone has any comments or questions for Kristin? Ray?
No, that was a... Glad to see that you've been going to the meetings. That's always pretty important, you know, that you're not just jumping in there should you get the position.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one of those things, it's very time-consuming. So you're prepared to spend a fair amount of your time on that position?
Yeah, I mean, I'm already there. You know, I go pretty much unless there's some sort of conflict, I go there. Pretty much whenever there's a school board meeting, I make sure to attend. Because I feel like it's especially with things that have been going on. I felt like that it was really important that if I'm going to have an opinion about things, you have to be willing to go and listen, even if you don't agree with things or you get upset with things, you have to be willing to listen. I mean, I know my letter of interest, and I work as a nurse at the CTH. So I've come, you know, I'm used to dealing with sometimes big personalities, especially when you're dealing with doctors. You get pushed back from people, you know, trying to juggle everything. Especially, as I said, where I work as a relief charge nurse. So I'm in charge of both of our units and having to push back sometimes when it's not in the best of the interest of our nurses. If they're trying to push to get people up onto our unit, trying to advocate for people. So I get, like, you know, when you come to a school board, there's a lot of, can be a lot of big personalities, a lot of opinions about what one person might feel is the best thing. But you really have to go with a really open mind and be willing to listen to all sides and really figure out what's best for the community and the town and the kids and the public.
One of the things that I liked about Peter was his communication back to the board.
Yeah.
So I would hope, and Gabe as well, since that way usually they would come in together, maybe once a quarter, just to kind of update us on what was going on. And if they needed anything, we were trying to support them as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I would be willing to 100% do that. Because I feel that it's important that everybody knows what's going on on the school board end and here. So yeah, 100%. I mean, that's, I think that communication is a big key to making important decisions, making sure that everybody's well informed. Because miscommunication can really spread like wildfire. And that's where hard feelings can sometimes, or misinterpretations of what somebody thought they heard, just, you know.
So have you had any feedback from the supervisory meeting yet?
So just Bridget sent me an email last week saying that she received it, that thanked me for stepping up to volunteer, that she thanked me for my volunteer work that I do. And that, just from Kristin as well, just saying to, you know, are you available to come on September 19th?
So that's scheduling, I guess that's where I was going.
Yeah, and so they, yeah, September 19th is, you know, and then just Maureen, that she saw that my letter had come through. Because I sent it to not only the chair and the superintendent, but the entire school board as well, just so that they...
Not a trade-in, I'm sure. That's probably a good idea. Well, you know, certainly I wish you luck there.
Thanks.
Well, Kristin, do you have a comment?
I have a couple of questions. So one of which you started to address, but I may as well just ask the question straight out, which is how do you plan on dealing with the issues that led to Peter's resignation?
So I think what I kind of saw over the progress since I've been at meetings in February is I felt, I, my personal feeling is that you need to speak your voice, even if it's not a popular, what you want to say isn't popular and what goes against maybe the majority of what is said. So I do feel like some people aren't willing to be honest and kind of sometimes go along with the status quo of the school board. I mean, I'm really, I mean, your job on the school board is to make the best decisions for your town or the kids or the whole district of every town. And you, you need to say what you want to say. You might not be the most popular person, but you have to be honest with how you feel. And try not to take it too personal if you buy heads. Does that kind of...
It does.
Okay.
And the second question was, what would your approach be to control the costs?
That I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. Because I'm, you know, I guess I would have to, I'm not, I don't have a lot of experience in that area. I guess it's just to be really well-informed, honestly. It's to be really well-informed, I guess, that's, I'm not sure. Like I said, I don't have, I don't have experience with things like that. That's where I do lack in experience. But I would try to ask the questions that need to be asked. Like for, I'll just give you an example, this whole solar deal thing that the school board noted on. You know, I really felt like we kind of, as not be personally, but as a school board, you kind of held all the cards in a way. And felt like maybe, I know that they didn't vote on it until they came back in August, but maybe could have worked potentially a better deal by asking the questions or, you know, so... I don't know, things like, you know, just trying to get more information, be better informed, and really not make the split-second decisions that I sometimes feel that the board needs to take more time on. That's the other thing, issue that I feel the board has. I feel like they're not taking enough time on important subjects to vote on. And I feel like they vote on them when they need a little bit more time to really think about it, investigate, do research.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anything else, Kristin? Callie, how are you doing? Great, we'll again, we'll thank you.
Yeah.
And we will certainly, we appreciate you taking the time to come in.
Okay, sure, listening to me. Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
You don't have to run, you can stay for the whole meeting.
Oh, thanks, my husband's at town.
I don't want to stay.
All right, so seeing no other public comments. Unless anyone around the table has any public comments? We'll go ahead. Katrina? Would you like to do reports and communications here?
I have one thing, you'll see it in your signature sheets. I just printed it, so it doesn't have a little tab on the sign. But we got another $5,000 towards Lynch Hill from CBRCP today.
Okay, I did see that, we had, it was a deadened contract.
Yep. Yep, so it was Cheryl turned in all the paperwork, because it's done. And said, I see you did another section above what I pointed out, but I can add it on.
And that was Lynch Hill again?
Yeah.
And we also were able to get more money for lovers claimings, correct?
Yes, yes, both of them. Oh, and also one other thing was I just turned in another grant for hopefully windows at the town hall, since the new one is beautiful and works. We just did seven, so there's eight main ones on the front and the sides, the big, big ones. So I just turned that grant, and we should hear back about that by the end, before the end of the year. That's it?
So the windows we're getting, I don't think this came up before. Something about the historic preservation?
They're historically correct windows.
Okay.
And they rebuild the cells, so it's not like a...
Okay.
I mean, yes, they're plastic and energy efficient, but they're correct in every way.
Okay.
Love-wise.
Okay.
Ray, Jim?
I did vote for everything.
Kelly?
Yes. So I went to the class for road renovation last Monday night. So we got to look at some of the work on Lynch Hill, which is awesome. They dug all the way up to the first camp. You can basically drive a car up there now. And they talked about all the different ways that you can, all the different things that you can do to the road to make changes, to reduce the phosphorus coming down, or just slow the water down. Sometimes it may not take as much as you think it does, but...
So who put that presentation on, was there any...
CBRCP.
And they had someone technical there, you know, all this advice, or was there an engineer or something?
It was the, from, it's DMS. And I can't tell you what that stands for. It was better road, what is it, right? Better road practices?
Yeah.
Is the standard they went by.
Yes.
Better road practices.
No, not better practices.
Was it well attended?
No.
And there was, what, 10 people there?
Yeah, he said he expected 10 to 15.
10 to 15.
Not bad for a community.
A couple people from different towns came that didn't take advantage of the grant money, that wanted to see how we used it, and were pretty impressed. They also said that the hill was like the Cadillac of fixes and anything.
Not really, it's really nice.
It's amazing, okay, it's beautiful. Dan was supposed to send me after pictures, or before pictures. I actually have some after pictures, but yeah, it's very nice.
So is there like a couple of sentence explanation of what they did?
To the road?
Yeah.
Went through, they did all, they dug out the ditches, hydro seeded, uh, laid stone in the corner where it loops around right before the hill, the first hill. They laid gravel all the way up to the...
Some places they had to build the road up because of the ledge, so they couldn't dig ditches.
Yep, they had to build it up.
They still have water barriers in there?
Not really, they have...
There's a couple, yeah, there's some runouts. There's a couple spots where there's like mini water barriers. I think they were gonna go back up and put deeper water barriers in.
That would be my biggest concern, because without those water barriers, you have to redirect the water, or else everything will wash out and it'll be down the bottom of the hill.
A lot of it was, they did different slopes at different places for the water to run, what they wanted it to.
I meant, I really didn't mean to take a look at it, but I just...
They have like a handheld level that they can just put down and it gets you all the slopes. So they walked along that.
So, oh great, should be a year up, but you can't. For a year.
But there is no sign at the bottom of the hill anymore.
Yeah.
The sign was there for like two days and someone stole the brand-new sign.
The road sign?
The Lynch Hill sign, yeah.
Yep.
You want to roll your roll. Jason, what about yourself here?
Um, yes. I looked into something that was prompted by the draft change to the personnel policy that you did. And I wasn't quite sure what you meant by the change in it. And I wanted to clarify that, but I figured I should look into what other towns do regardless.
Which personnel from which draft?
This is the part about changing what we do for retirees.
Oh, retirement, okay.
So can you explain what that's meant to do before I...
Yep, I have to answer. What Cheryl and I proposed was, it was adding retired employee health insurance benefit to the personnel policy. So it was employees 65 years of age and have worked for the town in Moretown for at least 15 years, or reduced hours, or can reduce hours to part-time and still be eligible for the same insurance benefits as active full-time employees.
Okay.
So it's not asking for anything if they're not working.
Does that mean that the town would be paying, or that the benefits are available?
The benefits are available. Employee would still pay the same as what they pay when they're full-time.
Now, that starts getting tricky, because once, as in complicated, because once an employee turns 65, they are Medicare eligible and it's a different insurance program. So this isn't something that VLCT does, I don't think. They did refer me to some plans that AARP offers. Have you already looked into what the insurance would be? Because it would be different from what our employees have.
We're asking for it to be the same.
Yeah, and it can't be, because the employee is Medicare eligible.
But they don't have to accept Medicare, because it costs more than what it would cost them here. It's better coverage here.
I don't think that's true, is it?
No, I don't think so either. I think that they are obligated. If they work full-time, then they don't have to take Medicare, is my understanding. And afterwards, I don't think, in other situations, I don't think there's a choice. And then the question is, what is there in the way of a Medicare wrap policy? What to handle, what Medicare does not, so the coverage ends up being the same.
Yeah.
And that's what these AARP plans, for example, do when they're on holders. But it's a completely different insurance regime than what employees have.
Okay.
So...
I think that's, that's good information. I think what we need to do, because that's a lot, it's kind of getting into that area where we need to spend a lot of time on.
Yes, I'm just saying, I called VLCT, here's what they told me.
Well, he was looking into it for the cost aspect of it. Yeah.
Well, I think that's good, because we have budgets coming right up. And this is something that we want to put to bench one way or another this year.
So two more sentences. What they told me is, they don't track this, but from their knowledge, small towns in general do not do this, and large towns in general do.
Yeah.
Like South Burlington.
I have found that, yeah.
Right. And towns on our scale generally do not. And that's really all I found out so far.
All right.
Really, with that information, Katrina?
Yeah, I'll go back.
And see what you can come up with.
Okay.
Go with that. Any other, Jason, for public comment? Or not public?
No, that's it for reports.
Communications and reports. All right, I have a few different things. First, starting with something Cheryl left, this actually came to Cheryl Lynn, but from Michelle Safran, they have in their open mic. And they want to know if they can run a banner that says, "Open Mic Friday, 7:00 to 9:00", it's about two feet high, it's gonna stretch between the two columns. It's a waterproof type with grommets. I don't mind if it's hum, but we need to make sure it's not damaging anyone, anything. So I don't know if you can pass that on.
So I talked to Corey this afternoon after that. And it would start, I think it's next weekend, so they'd like to hang it up for the week before each month. And so I told her that you guys may want to look at it after the first time it's hung. And she said that was no problem.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Did she describe how it would be hung from the top?
It's just a tire, or tires. It's ropes around the top of the column, and the column is square. So it would hang on that lip right there. So it wouldn't be attached to it at all. No, our tires.
You're tired, aren't you?
I am.
So one of the other things, and again, Katrina worked on this for us, is the nominations for the municipal service awards for both Cheryl Lynn and Sasha.
It was actually only Cheryl Lynn to be nominated. You have to be an elected official.
Ah, okay. All right, and so other things that I have. We got a call from Ray Munn, and he wants to cut some trees that we'd like to have. I said that you and John, but I should go off, and with Ralph, with Martin as well. And he thinks it might be in the town right away, but he just wants to make sure that he can do it. You know, his trees, but...
He spoke to me also about it for a couple of minutes. And you might want to talk to him, because he was, if I understood him correctly, he wanted to take down some trees and restore a stone wall. So, okay, you might want to discuss that.
Yeah, he did say, he said the trees were on top of the stone wall. He just wanted to cut the trees, but I don't know what he's gonna, he's gonna resurrect the stone wall.
So he's not expecting the town to cut the trees, but he's just...
No, no, he wants, said the people to come up there and just check in with it and making sure everyone's happy with what he would like to do.
His wife just passed away, didn't she?
She didn't.
Yeah. In addition, I also have heard from people on Old Route 100, with the construction going on, Mary Lou Duke. We were doing ditches, and it's on 100, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
And also the other people at the end, they haven't named. But anyways, I've had Martin go back just to kind of talk with them, you know, to make sure, you know, that they understand why we're doing it, you know. And he had reached out to them prior, so it wasn't a huge surprise. You know, so he communicated, I think, you know, early with them to let them know. But I think anyone that sees the, all the ditching that's being done, it's such a difference than what they had.
Was it Henderson, I'm there?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and they were, they were all very nice. But they were all, you know, they just wanted to adapt a little bit.
Yep, and the ditches sometimes will cause that in people.
Yeah.
What's the requirement for ditching there?
As far as depth-wise?
Or why isn't it needed?
Basically, it's so the water gets out of your road somewhere, and you know, you don't, you want water in the road, if you can help it.
And it's been, I think Martin said, around 10 to 12 years since any work had been done there. And so there was a lot of, you know, junk trees and alder that grows in the ditch that people like, and they kind of use those as garden rails. You know, that makes them feel safe. But when they take, when you take that out, it exposes things in the end. And they can see the ditches now. So it really actually, one of those slowed them down, but it, particularly, as they say, it frightens them, because now they can see how big they are. But and a lot of it, people need to understand it too, it's the new state standards that were, were using, and your point is to get the water off the road, out of the ditches. So I think it's, it's ending well there, but there was a little bit of unrest for a while just because of the scope of the work. But I think the guys were doing a good job, and I think that has slowed down a little bit. We addressed that as well. That is that. And we are at 6:30, so we're right about, we'll come back and do the meeting minutes when John gets here, but we've got Eric here.
Hi.
How you doing, Eric?
Eric, how are you? How you doing? Can't see you.
Hey, Eric.
Callie.
Callie, Callie, oh sorry, Callie. And Jason, Eric Tittre, hi.
I'm Katrina.
Katrina, I got an email from you today.
So Eric's here for our annual report for the Mad River Recreation District.
The Mad River Valley Recreation District is, as you all know, municipal organization chartered in 1994 by the three towns, Wadsteel, Faceton, Warren. And I guess going past a year ago, there was interest in purchasing Mad River Park, issued regarding funding, where the soccer fields and lacrosse fields are. Purchased from Kingsbury, there's huge effort to, to raise the funds necessary and obtain a grant from National Park Service Water Soil Conservation Grant. I forget the name of it. But about a year ago, the park was purchased. And is owned by the Mad River Valley Recreation District. Moretown participates financially and as a voting member on issues relating to the Mad River Park. Though more general issues not relating to the Mad River Park. Moretown is not a voting member, so to speak. With respect to the park, I think it is the only, I'm quite sure that it is the only property, real, piece of real property that is owned by the Recreation District. You guys know that they have a lot of involvement in, you know, maybe issuing grants to smaller organizations, the PATH Association, the Mad River Valley Riders Bike Club, and, you know, one outfit or another for different purposes. But, you know, I'm the representative, have been for the last close to a year. And a few issues have arisen. With respect to the park, you know, there's sports fields. And all the concerns that you'd expect to arise with respect to maintaining and owning open land for the purpose of recreation fields have arisen. Obviously, they want to maintain the quality of the turf. There's been purchased many pounds of grass seed and mulch compost, which has been applied. They've aerated, they arranged for the mowing. I think one of the Kingsburies may contract to do the mowing. So there's a lot of effort taking place to improve and maintain the quality of the recreation fields. Obviously, water is a big issue. And this summer, it was a huge issue, a lack of for quite a while with the heat. It's very, very well drained, and so the grass nearly burnt. But, you know, as in the past couple of weeks with the rains, we rebounded and I think things are going okay. A big issue arose last autumn when the Wadsteel representative, a gentleman by the name of Michael Nucci, is a Wadsteel representative to the district, and he's also the head of the committee regarding the Mad River Park. He's done a huge amount of work on a volunteer basis to get permits for different things and take care of the fields. He also coaches, he lives right there, huge effort. But he took it upon himself, I think the listeners in Wadsteel wanted, you know, summoned him to a meeting at which they explained that, that, you know, they questioned basis for the tax-exempt status of the park. And they felt that... And they felt that like the Couples Club property in Weathfield, there would need to be a townwide vote. And I won't go into the details, you may well be familiar with it. But for certain charitable organizations that own property for public purposes, there needs to be a townwide vote on their tax exemption. We took a close look at it and with huge effort, and we included, persuaded the state property valuation and review and the Weathfield listers that the Mad River Valley Recreation District is a municipal organization that owns a piece of property for public purposes. Its property is exempt from tax taxation, there's no townwide vote needed. And, you know, there is a, a, a real concern on the part of the board. And in any event, we succeeded in establishing with the affirmation of the property valuation review, as I mentioned, the statutory basis for the exemption. And so that's a relief.
Unfortunately, thank you on that. That sounds like it was a huge undertaking.
Well, it was a lot of money. It's a work. And I was retained to help the district at not, you know, not on a pro bono basis to articulate the statutory basis for the creation of the Mad River Valley District. What the statutes have to say about inter-municipal union districts. You know, obviously, well, you may know about the Waduski Valley Recreation District, which owns many properties throughout the Chippement County area which are exempt. And so why this would be treated differently, there's no reason, it's just, who knows why. But, you know, the town of Weathfield's listers were looking at the prospect of imposing a property tax on...
A million dollars or whatever.
Well, anyway, so, so I imagine when the, when the grant list was actually available for review, the abstract, they did not list all of the exempt properties. And so there was still some concern. We had a grievance hearing just on abundance of caution. And to be sure that, you know, that, that, that they were on the grant list going to be confirming the exempt status. So, I mean, it's kind of unfortunate and arduous process. That should not have been necessary to begin with, but in any event. And then, you know, issues have arisen with respect to the use of the parking area. As you may know, they, they created a large parking area to try to divert, divert the parking from the Mad River Park. Commercial some over to this new parking area. And people have parked there, left, you know, left their things. And the, you know, some of the neighbors are concerned about that. An issue has arisen recently about soccer and lacrosse families driving on the Mad River Park driveway. We are not a member of the Mad River Association that serves that common driveway serving the, you know, where, um, it's cat, no, not cat, uh, Clearwater Filtration is in there, was Kevin.
Mm, I used to be right now, you know, Kingsberry and...
And a bunch of others. Natural Light Company, Verilox or whatever it is. So, anyway, so we're working through some issues with respect to the use of that common driveway, which, you know, not being part of the association, we're trying to get soccer players and their families not to use that driveway. They want, they, the association has asked to be listed as named insured on the district's insurance policy. Fear being that, you know, somehow they're gonna be liable for an accident if a kid runs after a soccer ball or something. And we're working through that issue. We're working through an issue of the, there's a private company recording studio right adjacent to the fields. And he wants to negotiate a license to host a music event. So we're working through that and trying to, you know, reach an agreement. That would be a year from now. I'm not sure, let's see, we've improved the fields, lost seed, aerated. We're working on trying to cite a source for water. And maybe pricing now, we're getting bids for a well. You know, we anticipate every year we're gonna run into this problem where if it's hot and dry for a while, we're gonna...
Had they had that problem prior to this?
They've had that problem, and it is exceeding the well drained. I mean, it's, and so it just doesn't hold moisture. And then the grass dies and weeds crop up, you know, which, you know, has been the way it's been, right? But we'd like to have good quality fields to, you know, at least be on par with the kind of standards made by other, you know, we have hosting soccer tournaments, lacrosse tournaments, things like that, safer, not be hard tan, so.
My son plays there all year round and it's one of the better fields he does play on. Yeah, I mean, yeah, the grass did die, but everywhere it died for a while.
How, and participation, I remember they were anticipating more activity there. Has that continued to grow?
Well, there's lacrosse leases fields in the spring. The soccer, Mad River Soccer leases the fields for fall soccer. You know, I think otherwise people may sort of on an ad hoc basis. I think there might be a crew of people at one of the businesses in the association who play ultimate day, midday, so, you know. But, you know, there is, there has now been constructed and soon to be sort of commemorated pavilion. And store, you know, there, there permits were issued, obtained and issued before. Storage shed, pavilion, kiosk, that's sort of coincident with the Mad River path being extended to the recreation fields. And so there's a kiosk, obviously the parking lot, stormwater issues. So, you know, as far as more people using it for field sports, I don't think it's necessarily any more active than, than it has been. My daughters grew up there playing soccer, it might be.
Yes, yep.
But...
They were talking about doing more tournaments and activities like that to bring more people into town. I just hadn't known if that had started yet.
Well, there's a lot of, you know, there are different things going on with different groups trying to, of course, generate more traffic in the valley. The Mad River bikers, I don't know, the PATH Association. You know, they've, they've constructed and installed trail heading markers at different paths around the valley. And this is done by the Recreation District, including at the Mad River Park. These kiosks, which are attractive, you know, people come and they wanna hike and walk or whatever. But, you know, there is some hope that Sugar Works, is that what it's called? Sugar House Sound Works. A guy who owns the recording studio, I mean, it's unbelievable. It's state of the art recording studio. Just happens to be right there in the valley. This guy came from Austin, Texas. Eric, what's his last name? Escapes me. But he, he, he wants to host this annual event modestly. In part as a fundraiser for the Mad River Park. And in part as a, you know, just a community event. But he knows what he's doing as far as promoting, producing an event like this. And, you know, it was hoped that we'd have things in place for him to host this, this autumn. Didn't work out, so we're looking to next year. But if it, you know, I mean, there's a concern, obviously, the park is, or the district is concerned about liability, wanting to protect itself in all ways from any kinds of liability. And so that's, that's an issue in indemnification and, you know, it may be that others, I think there was a feeler put out by some other group approaching the district. You know, I think the group that may, may ultimately have ended up in Sugarwood North parking lot or where it was.
Friendly Gallery.
Friendly Gallery, so I'm not sure it's suitable for that right now. I mean, we're often mainly, I mean, and then we have restrictions under the grant, you know, for, I mean, this is, you know, this is a municipal organization with all the rights and responsibilities of other municipal corporations, the Mad River Valley Recreation District. And, you know, it's a public use recreation owned by a municipal corporation, unlike the Waterbury Ice Center, which is a separate entity and for which they had to have a vote. So anyway, if our pitch to maintain our exemption is fully a public use, we've gotta be careful about, for what, you know, the purposes for which we might license or nice to park. Now, fifteen hundred bucks from town of Moretown. I don't, for the very same reason, I don't think you should have, should need a W nine.
Don't pay anybody without a W nine.
This is what?
Even, even like people like the appropriations.
How about the town of Duxbury, if Duxbury does something?
We have one for town of Lptillier, yeah.
For Sheriff's Services Department. Okay. Because it's, obviously, it's a, the tax ID number for the KE.
Yeah.
But it's also, primary purpose is for tax withholding. There should be withholding because we're a municipality.
Don't need one.
Oh, you still need one?
Mm-hmm.
Have you treasured?
Oh, that comes from Cheryl, so she's just...
I'm just relaying it.
So the treasurer says that, you know, those are, okay.
Yeah, what I was saying is even the people that we give donations to, that we vote on every year for a town meeting, we still get a W nine from them too.
If I give you a W nine, will I get a donation?
I need to give us a W.
Okay, I've used up my time, yours. And is there anything you wanna know about the district or the park?
Now, that was a good presentation, wasn't it? Gets me up to date.
Do you guys get minutes from the Valley District? I thought I saw that the last email, sending out the minutes from our July meeting, may have included Moretown officials.
No, I don't think they do, no.
I think...
Do you want?
That would be great if you could.
I mean, the Mad River Valley Recreation District has had its own website, madriver, M R whatever, dot org. But I think they are in the process of taking that down and just using a Facebook site as their official site. But we have the same obligations to post minutes, agenda, et cetera. And so there is, there has been, it's in transition. But there has been, you can go on their site and you can read all about what they do and what the business they've attended to.
Yeah, Katrina, if you do our, our email, just send it on that service list.
Yeah.
That would be good to get.
Or every time I get them, I'll just forward to you.
Yeah, you have them, you know, yeah.
Yeah, do that, that's great, she can send them to us.
Yeah, that would be better. And so...
We push that, you know, as soon as you lock up the door.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I mean, I can say, we get, we need monthly, except we didn't, we didn't shoot them or something. I don't know, eleven months out of the year. I afford those minutes. If you'd like me to appear here to report more than once a year, let me know.
We'll do that.
If you'd like me to summarize something for the town report. I shouldn't have mentioned that.
Because I'm the one that does it. See, you just mentioned it right in front of me.
But that would be excellent, that would be just a town report.
Yeah.
Just a...
Should we spend fifteen hundred?
Oh, well, I wanted to know. The Mad River Valley Planning District is also an inter-municipal district created by the three, Faceton, Weathfield. And you may have read in the Valley News, or the Valley Reporter, the idea that the Planning District is, is with some involvement by the Central Regional Planning Committee, thinking about a local option tax, one percent tax on sales. And so in part to raise money to be permanent financing for the Mad River Park. But I would hope people, obviously, Montillier, Burlington, you know, other towns have a local tax. And so we in the district are wondering why we couldn't just do that.
Because people won't want to pay the extra one percent.
Think of the problem at the Moretown General Store. So anyway, I mean, that's something that, you know, and I think, you know, the Valley towns, they have a tri-town meeting which is coming up. Yeah, I, I don't know to what extent whether the Select Board, as a participant, which affected the park at least, you know, has direct kind of communication with the other three Valley towns with, you know.
Right.
But I, I don't rely on this conduit of information. I'll report on the doings of the district, but, you know, obviously, you guys were solicited to participate.
And thank you for that, your participation there.
Yep.
I have one quick question. Part of the pitch was that additional revenues were anticipated to help bring down the maintenance costs. And it sounds like this tax issue may be affecting that?
Well, I don't think, I mean, that, that is just in its infant stages. I mean, actually, what's his name, a Select Board member from Warren. Maybe the chair of the Warren Select Board, whose name?
In a cutting room, maybe?
No.
Or she's still on there?
No, no, no. Anyway, he, he attended our, the district's most recent monthly meeting on the twenty-first of August. And it was maybe a day or two after an article had been, or the follow, the week following this article in the Valley Reporter about, you know, local option tax idea. And so he made a pitch, I think, you know, in the whole, that the district for its part would be, you know, lend its voice to that. You know, and there's just something to observe and follow. But I don't think that, I, I, I don't, I think that's a very kind of recent idea. And I would bet that with...
Not what, what we were told during the pitching part of this. It was more additional revenues used in outside parties.
And so, you know, I think there's a hope that we will be able to do that. I, I, I guess I wasn't fully aware of that when I was...
Yeah, you can attend a little bit later. Yeah, you got to attend a little bit later.
Yeah. And, right. So, but, you know, we're going to hope to see if we can have this music festival, you know, with the proviso that we are, this is, not only are we bound under the terms of our grant to use this for recreation field purposes. So renting it out to, you know, soccer tourneys or lacrosse tourneys or ultimate or whatever, that would cover our costs, yes. But, you know, it's got to be done in a way that we're not putting at risk our status as a public entity. And that we're not exposing ourselves to undue liability for like people drinking beer at a music concert or whatever. And then also the issue of parking and driving and circulation, working with the park association, the Business Owners Association. But, you know, I don't know, you know, let's get out for sports events or, I don't know, you know, I mean, I suppose it's craft, they have Kingsburg Steel or Canyon's. And that probably won't be a good record. So stay tuned on that.
One other thing for you, leave Eric, are you going to be able to make next week's meeting? We have invited.
Planning Commission subdivision regulations.
Right, yeah, me and us, so we, instead of just like handing things out, you know, here are the rules and regulations, get everyone's input, so I hope you can make it.
Hope so. I assume, my calendar. I thought it was this Thursday and then I had to check. Next month?
It's Monday, six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Yeah, good.
You can get your input.
Yeah, that sign on the Mortown Town Hall for the.
Yeah.
I want to check the sign.
We did, all right.
So what do you expect of an application?
JV said it was fine.
No doubt.
You definitely will hear next Monday, JV. Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, thank you, nice to see you all.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
All right, so we have a move ahead, if everyone's all set. You know, I would like to wait for John for the quotes for the lister business. And so maybe, why don't we do the Town Hall Chair Table Rental?
Sure. So I think since our last meeting, I've had like five people call me and ask if they could borrow tables and chairs, because there's nowhere in the valley to rent them anymore. There's, because when incentive events is closed. So I don't, my personal feelings, I don't think we should just give them out. If they get ruined, we don't have any money to recoup them. So I made an agreement, if you guys want to do it, there's one here for you to view, that I went and looked at all the different places that do rent them and got like the average prices of what they rent them for. So most places rent eight foot tables for ten dollars each. And chairs are based on, they don't have obviously the same chairs, but about three dollars a piece. And there would be a hundred fifty dollar deposit, which is the same deposit you have to put down when you rent the Town Hall itself. It's almost the same contract, just a little shorter than the Town Hall rental. Because, so we have lent amount to two people, Cheryl Lynn and Cheryl O'Payton, or Cheryl O'Payton, that said that they would make a donation and we didn't really get anything. So it was two hours of my time on the weekend, being there to unload and, you know, to be there for themselves.
Yeah, that's unacceptable.
Exactly.
Spending your weekend time buying tables and chairs. I find that, like you said, I think if we, just because there's no rent, I mean, we can start letting them out, everyone will use them and the wear and tear of them.
So the replace, just so you know, to the replacement cost, for a table is a hundred dollars, for a chair it's a hundred twenty.
Okay, so then why is the charge for chairs so much less than the charge for a table?
Because nobody, because the chairs are a lot cheaper than the tables, for one, they can go through a lot more. And like I said, I went through all the other rental places throughout the month and that's, if we charge enough, see them after my rent payment. And what's the chances that they're going to loan a chair and a table? It's mostly more time, I mean, it's been more time residents, they haven't run far.
Hopefully for a table less than one and ten, for a chair less than one and three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rate any comments on this?
So who will be, will be able to be handling?
Cheryl Lynn and I both, like we do the Town Hall now with the money.
Yeah, yeah. Any kind of revenue helps.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
And there are, I'm sure there's always cases where, you know, we may, we can let this waive the, waive the fee, but let's wait till those come up.
Yeah.
You know, but like anything, let's try to do it.
We had one rental last week that you guys had said that we were waiving the fee for Mortown residents, so Cheryl and Cheryl signed up on it because it was in between, it was a, it was a funeral, not a funeral, you know what I mean?
Wait.
Something. But they did great, I mean, they, you know, they signed the contract, they gave the deposit, it was all planned after.
Yeah.
What are we dealing with scheduling, say, the possible need of tables and chairs in the Town Hall? I'm sure you.
Well, I mean, yeah, we have to, obviously, all fairs, sign if they're available, then they're not, you know. But we have, there's not any event that uses every chair and table, there's a lot of chairs and tables in there.
I move, accept this table and chair rental agreement. Seconds, any further discussion? All in favor, would I? Thank you, well done, Katrina, putting that together and doing that work. Do we, do you know Martin's going to be coming on?
He said he was, last I talked to him.
All right. You know, well, why don't we just go ahead and start looking at the lister work weekend week. I thought, great, John's not here, so they had a while, put his dog down, I guess.
He will be in. It was, I don't know if it was today they had to, but I think his kids were, his kids were, his kids were down, maybe, yeah. So you have copies of somewhere there? I'll give you numbers to go with what you're looking at too. Because we obviously already have a current contract with member. So when you're looking at that, our current contract price is eight thousand one hundred ninety.
Here is it. Say again?
Eight thousand one hundred ninety is our current contract with member. So the difference is two thousand six hundred twenty-five. And change.
Twenty-six, twenty-five, what's that?
Just to be clear, this includes in your work that they do now, the eight thousand one ninety, is that an additional one?
No, 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 that's already the contract we have. And to be clear to this only, this does not include renewing tax maps. That's a separate contract in itself. But this is every, reappraisals, all of that stuff.
So Katrina, on the front page, you point out.
So it added more time in office administration, that line, it added just more hours there. Uh, yeah, Cheryl didn't break it down for me line by line. And it added more on, the cloud service is new. That part is new.
No change to your notebook?
I don't believe so, because I think it's in the cloud. Something to do with that.
And of course, the setup they left is new, but that's. So did you want this, the new agreement, or one of these, Katrina, or?
Um, I got the lowdown from Cheryl Lynn, because I don't, she knows way more about this than I do. And this is everything that the listers are required to do, is on this agreement, which is what she asked the quote to be. And then I also have the numbers for you of what the listers, we've paid the listers for the last eight years.
Anticipated.
I did!
Did you, um, yeah, is that a sheet you could just copy and give to everyone?
Oh, sure.
So the eight thousand one hundred ninety that currently being. You said we are pretty clear to be the eight thousand one hundred?
That's every, all the work that they do that I'm not involved in.
You know what, would it be helpful if we had a copy of that contract as well?
Of the, of the contracts that includes that eight thousand, okay. I can teach you that tonight.
Right, I understand that, but that, that way we can kind of pick the difference.
Yeah.
Because the hours to us, this is, this really mean a lot, but.
Right, please go with their.
What they're actually doing.
Yeah.
And then we need to sit down with, I think, the listers, and sit down and decide what we need to, we'll, we'll do it quickly, I think, but kind of marry the two together to figure out what is best.
And just to be clear, they are estimating the new hours that they would need to spend part of what the listers probably do, could be any, but.
So just so you see, I did an average including this year, but then I took this year out and did a second average. That's what all those numbers are.
Very helpful, thank you.
This is this year.
Well, then, um, so I took it out and then again.
Good, I was thinking thirty-five and three.
Yeah, pretty close.
I've helped with that since I last booked, so.
Yes, yes.
Yes, so the average was forty-four seventy-seven?
That was including this year.
This year, okay.
Yeah, so without tax maps, thirty-eight hundred and four.
So the tricky part is being able to tell if this would, this amount of money would cover the same amount of work that the listers do for thirty-nine hundred.
According to Cheryl Lynn, yes, but I can get, like I said, the other contracts, so you can look at it for yourself. Because we're not the only town that member does this for.
If the workload requires more work, then the additional work would be at seventy-five dollars now.
I would assume so.
Yeah, I think.
We're depending on the, on the.
Which I'm sure they're going to the best of their abilities, but it's sometimes a little hard, as we know. And then we also need to make, you know, do some social shit, thinking about in what level of, I guess, do we want from our listers? You know, do we, really, you know, as in, you know, as Mike said, and they were talking about kind of quasi what we've got going on now, and maybe even more of that, or totally no listers. You know, so there's a lot to think about with this decision.
My first thought is by no means a considered look at it yet, but my first thought is we would still want listers to review the work and sign off.
Yeah, I agree there, we, you certainly, I mean, statutes, you need to sign off.
Yeah, great. And to me, that makes more sense if simply just continuing listers and say, okay, they'll just go do their thing.
Right, because we need that, I mean, it needs to be the face of the town and the communication there. So I think that's why, and just we're with the analytics, this is kind of taking that thirty-eight hundred dollars and that twenty-six, one, looking, trying to figure out what, you know, where that work is coming from and what we can save with the listers, but also what we can have these guys do, because, you know, maybe more efficient, we might save us money in the long run because of that.
One thought I have too, like, was going forward, if they, if those two stop being listers, are you going to get anyone as qualified as the people you already have? When the one on here we got, it's in there, he's already resigned. I'm alone again, you know? And that's another thing, is you might not have people that are willing to do it anymore.
That's a valid concern.
Yeah.
Another is, since the board discussed adding dimensions to the tax maps, be very aware that that's something that has to be maintained, and it's something that will make errors more apparent, which is good for them. But the outcome of that would give more lister time to maintain and amend those numbers.
I mean, you always should be maintaining all things of those tax maps, but you think that, you know, those dimensions are more so.
Yes. I don't show anything so also. One of the reasons for that is simply that it's more in your face, people will see all the numbers.
Yep.
Now, that's a good thing, will lead to more accurate tax maps. The consequence, though, is, yes.
Yeah, confrontation, I guess you could say. But that's almost one of the reasons why we do want it there, you know, it's, it will create it, but it's for that transparency, for people to understand their boundaries.
My, my only objection to that was only the price, because to me, it's something that they can do by flipping a switch. And I think we could do that.
Well, I, I haven't heard back, but if you, I'm sure you, minutes or maybe it was your comments or something, but it was actually.
Four thousand, not three thousand.
And we've allocated three thousand, so we need to, let's get a better deal, regardless, if they want to do it, just that way.
Which I don't even know how that happened, it was even in my written notes, four thousand.
So is there any other comments or questions on this, how was it we came, you know, we have a lot of, we had certain work to do, to look at this, but this is something that we need to, to do by, or maybe a decision by budget time, where, what we want to go. But certainly because we, you know, I don't want to get into the main event, elected officials, listers, so thinking about that.
Actually, I would see an effect on the budget. If we kept listers to do, you know, sign off, we're probably talking about the same total number.
Yeah, good problem, you know, but possibly could be, I'm more wary of, this word right here, estimate. And at the second, as you pointed out, it's seventy-five hundred an hour or something. But just, I would like that as a, as a timeline to get it done, rather than use that for excuse or comfort, because we have to.
An expense.
Just so we can get it done, and everyone knows what they're doing or not. All right, why don't we go ahead and approve of the eight twenty, twenty eighteen meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of eight twenty.
Any second on that?
Again.
Council. Any further discussion? All in favor of it, I?
I.
All right. I, all right. So, we are waiting the farm, Pony Farm retaining law. Why don't we, again, because I would like to wait for John, let's look, and see what else we have here to go through.
I'm just gonna take one more.
Hey, there's a couple more things, um, uh, communications, uh, more council report from Isaac Graham. He has a parcel of property on Stevens Brook Road, fourteen ten Stevens Brook Road. He's looking to donate the property to us. That's what we want, the land. He'd give it to us for free, um, looking forward to our reply.
Do you know how much the taxes are on that?
Five, entire, right on. Six hundred and six seventy-two in the taxes.
How big a parcel is it?
One point nine acres.
Which was adjusted from point four or five when the new tax maps came out.
And.
Want to see it just again, sorry?
Yeah, um. It's fourteen ten Stevens Brook Road. Hey, Martin?
Martin?
Martin, do you know where fourteen ten Stevens Brook Road is? I think it's just a piece of land, but I don't know what area it's in.
I don't know for sure.
Isaac Graham? Have a possible place to park your vehicles, so.
That was the old thing, I forgot, it was the map.
Someone, uh, offered the town.
Can you probably read the old map?
A couple acres, so I didn't know, um, you're prepared to just help on it? How long that roof is on? Yeah, so if.
I'll go Google map.
Yeah, why don't we find out where it is and.
Because it has gravel on it, they'll take it.
Right.
I guess I was suspicious of that, have we, John would be a good person to ask this, but is it a town in the past that we, we take a piece of property with that?
We have, we have, um, I'm trying to think where that was.
I guess it's right on, like, it's actually just in the ducts, right?
But I, I think it came under, I know it.
If it was worth anything.
Yeah, I don't know what the scale is, you know?
No, we can look at a picture of it, though. About seventeen acres, I guess. I'm digging that.
Okay, that would be a good reason to have it, you know? Another location, but.
Well, the habit of, I don't know, saleable property would be the only, but if it was, I would think this guy would probably sell it instead, yeah.
Yeah, that makes me wonder, why wouldn't he just sell it?
Why don't we look, sure, if you could find out exactly.
What do you think?
Fourteen. Fourteen ten?
It's right on the ducts bearing line, it's closer to Route one hundred on Duxbury than it is down to one hundred feet. I'm trying to see how far it is from one hundred.
Yeah, when I have more time, I could take a look and see if I can pull it, it's in a wetland or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's point seven miles off of Route one hundred. Down Stevens Brook.
It'd be basically Duxbury.
It, it, his address is Duxbury, yeah.
May have a bit of a.
Yeah.
Fourteen, probably like, almost one and a half mile, but this way, if that's the way I can. Well, that's, I'd put it pretty close to the town line. Maybe for, maybe, you know, turn around or something like that.
We have a pretty good one there right now, but.
Yeah. Well, let's just try to figure out where it is and.
Yeah, go.
Martin, do you know anyone else that's coming on that retaining wall?
I don't know, uh, I saw, to look at the agenda, that I just.
But we can get into that, because I don't, and if we have questions for them.
All right.
Do you, are you guys familiar, did you see the emails through?
Great, I figured.
It was there, uh, the retaining wall, it's over here on Pony Farm Road. Martin, we, oh, we should. So originally here, there's a proposal for retaining wall. But I've also, uh, was talking and to Dave Reed, he said you mentioned, and even originally I mentioned a guardrail.
Right, I, I mean, I've had talks with Dave as well regarding this, and if, he originally approached me as, would we put guardrail up, and I said, I didn't know if we would, you know, and then he was concerned, I guess the big, um, concern is the new, or the owner of the building will be living there now, and he's concerned about traffic potentially crashing into the house, and it is very close to the road. So I told him, I said, there's a couple different options there, I really, um, wouldn't necessarily like to see guardrail there, um, we, you know, really no need for, other than to protect the house, so. He said he would get ahold of his, uh, the friend, and the owner had a friend with
Art's engineer.
Yeah, so it came back with that, um, fairly elaborate wall structure. So I just kind of, in casual meeting with him at the, um, gas station down here one night, just told him, I said, in the end, I said, if it's strictly about safety, then possibly guardrail would be the best bet to go with in the end. And then, of course, it comes, and it's not just safety, it's also, I guess, they put new windows in, had to install a new window, they had a window broken, um, by a rock. He said that's not, uh, common occurrence, but it's happened over the years, they've had stones go through the windows and whatnot, so. I've gotten no issues as far as really trying to protect the house, I mean, I can understand where they're coming from, from a safety standpoint. At this point, um, the only thing I would be concerned about is, uh, me and the MUTCD co's, you know, a wall, you have to have, you know, shareable things to keep from, um, being impaled by projectiles and whatnot, and I'm not sure if that wall would qualify under those guidelines.
Right.
So possibly in the end, guardrail from a safety standpoint, would meet MUTCD, um, but would not help them out on their, protecting the glass on the windows, so possibly he still needs.
Right, and that might be his, he must have put screens or something over his windows.
Right, or something, so, um, I'm more than willing to work with him and come up with a solution, I just not sure what that solution's gonna be.
So they, uh, this house is, uh, it's always been there.
Oh, yeah.
Has anybody ever renewed this house?
Not, my knowledge.
So, I, uh, is there some, I told them, it's got new windows in this?
Yeah, um, I'm not sure if they're doing a, uh, rearrangement, and, um, Dave said something of a possible bedroom there or something, so. I think it was, that was a little bit more, but as far as I'm aware, nothing's ever, no vehicles have ever gone off the road and struck it that I know of, but that doesn't mean that it hasn't happened, or that it could have.
Is that a location where planting something could help?
Possibly, I mean, even some shrubbery might, you know, if it could had a chance to get mature enough, it would be some sort of a hedge, it's really close to the road, I mean, I would recommend, I can look at it and see, it's very close to the road, so. Anything they do for protection is going to be automatically in the right way, you know, any work that they do, so.
I'd, I'd, I've been by there enough, but I actually still am, I could just see, right? And, uh, it is in a precarious position, you know.
Yeah.
But I understand that it would water some, something, right? So.
Is it, would, would you say it's closer to the road than, like, where Fred Ladoo's house? Because I, I would think that's very close to.
Yeah, uh, probably a little bit closer, not by the law, the only thing that would make me a little bit nervous is it is in a little bit of a corner, not a sharp corner, but it is a little bit more of a corner, but yeah, you know what you're saying, I mean, it's similar to, I'd say it's a little bit closer than, um.
I think that, I think that makes a difference to me on that one, if you were, because you're coming from, coming from this direction's not.
No, not at all.
It's coming from the other direction, coming down that hill and taking.
Yeah, if it was super slippery and you locked up the brakes and you would, it would probably carry you right into the, into the.
Do we have any guardrail or any money for guardrail or any?
We don't, um, budget for it, um, usually it's part of a project thing, we, we don't currently have any rail kicking around or anything that we could install, but it's not, um.
Do you know how much that would, that would be?
Not terribly expensive, I would say, um, I, I wouldn't dare guess, but I could certainly get a quote on a twenty to thirty foot, you know, quote and see what they came up with, but.
I could look, initially look into that, and then we should look into this wall, I'm concerned about the, the, uh, what was the acronym?
Yeah, MUTC, the, um, yeah, traffic control devices, it's a, it's a standard, um, thing, and that's the only thing that I'm concerned about, is whether the town will be adopting some liability or allowing them.
And that's why I'm almost, if you go with a guardrail, I'd like to hear.
You do see all the other stuff I included in that?
Yeah.
Historic thing over a little wall and railway?
That's part of it as well, because if you read, because Cheryl brought me up, and I remember reading a lot in the newspaper about
Bat Head.
The Bat Head, you said?
Oh, yeah, of course.
And, so, I, I don't want to, that's constant, and sometimes it's more, less, less expensive to do something like a guardrail, or tell them to put in a hedge behind it or something, to protect their glass. And in that way, it, um, it also takes us out of that liability that someone came and asked for protection and we didn't give.
Yeah, no, I can certainly get a quote on that and see what it would be. You know, when he first approached me, it was kind of along the same line, it was like, but, you know, maybe a wall or, you know, whatever.
Right.
You know, maybe it goes away, it didn't go away, so we're, we're following up on it, and now it's, uh.
Now they're putting it at twenty seven mil.
Right, exactly, and so I think to, uh, in this particular instance, simplifying it would be best. The wall's fine, as far as I can see, at least according to work standards, it's just like I said, I'd be concerned about allowing it, and then whether we adopt some liability off of that, allowing that structure in the right way.
Yep. Yes, smelling them, it's sound, it's.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Is there anything grant eligible about guardrail in the territory?
Nothing that I've seen, I mean, usually if we do guardrails tied to a grant project that we've done, but I've never done just guardrail itself. Other than a few, you know, like the backside of the column and stuff.
I mean, any way to write it up as a safety improvement.
Yeah, I don't know.
I was gonna say, could you, uh, treat it again, maybe?
That new one that should have sent us had a bunch of different ones.
Yeah, and that's possible.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I wouldn't, yeah, I mean, just a, so we, I would say under a thousand dollars would be my guess for guardrail.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I don't think it would be, I think the trip charge would be as much as the rail itself, just to get them, just to get them here to put up. Well, you know, anything we've done in the past has been pretty much used rail, which is completely adequate, and, you know, so.
I'd be looking into that, for sure, if it's under a thousand dollars, I mean, that's.
Right, but we want, you know, definitely would, would want to have that as a firm number, I'd want to make some.
Of course.
I know, but that would be my guess, so.
All right. What else you had going on down there? Did you get everyone on one hundred, the old one hundred stuff now?
Yeah, to some extent, I guess, um, I did have a conversation with Mary, uh, who was, um, Ladoo there, and I think we're on the same page there at the farm. Our member came to find, I worked down there two days in a row, um, he saw me and didn't come to make any contact, he talked with Rodney today, sharing some of the same concerns, um, and we, Rodney told him that, you know, we weren't done, that, you know, allowed to finish the work, and then, you know, if the complaints or concerns are still there. I think it's just the shock value is very, still there, it's very different, you know, so there's, I've heard from a few different people, the south entrance is a little overwhelming, I mean, it makes it look like we've done major ditching and whatnot, but in actuality, that, so if you turn into the south entrance, the left-hand side of that road, that ravine was always there. It just was covered with grassy debris and stuff, so, um, same thing with on the right, once you get down where it flattens out, there's a fairly steep embankment for fifteen feet or so, and, um, Barb and Mary Lou were like, well, did you guys make that, or, you know, has it always been there, like, it, it's always been there, it's just been buried under, you know, cat bush and, you know, brushy debris, so it, it's there and it will grow back to that, it's just a little overwhelming when you take away the foliage.
You know, I, I, everyone is, I understand their, their concerns, but I would like, I grew up with you guys, and nice job, and a lot of it, you're too, you gotta get the culvert rid of, to the bottom.
Correct, yes, like, um, ours concerns are, um, the culverts are deep. And along with flat, at least, we're not setting that depth, the depth is set by the culverts that are there, you know, in place, we're not, we've changed a few culverts, but we haven't gone any deeper with them. So obviously, we have to ditch to that culvert, and then, one time or another, that ditch wasn't that deep at one point, it's just, it's filled in, and it's, so when you open it back up, it looks overwhelming, so.
Just continue to try to work with them down there.
Yeah, and I think we can, yeah, keep the, uh, keep the open dialogue and, um, you know, very hopeful to get wrapped up down there and get out of there on two different projects, so.
Heard nice things about the Lynch Hill.
Yeah.
Worked the best, didn't it?
Yeah, and we came up great, really happy with that, so.
Did you talk to Dan today?
I did, uh, via email.
He gave us some money.
He did, yeah, I see that with that, yeah, with that, so. Yeah, no, we, um, doing a, um, culvert install on Bat Head, so we've been, we're gonna move the excavator out and do that culvert, um, up there, it's at the Y with Flynn Road. There's a beaver pond there, and it's been historically washes out every spring and traps the residents on the other side, so. I think in the last, the last three years, we've been up there every spring to.
They bring the culvert in, is that the one?
Yeah, yes, we brought the culvert up there, yeah, so, and we're gonna be tackling that tomorrow, so.
Are you mentioning this, skipping around, there was that garden rail that was over on.
Yes. Gallery.
Gallery, yes.
Got it off my.
I think it's just something it'll take, remove. Yeah, it looks like from the picture, it just looks like there's a little furrow behind that, so it could.
Yeah, it's bad, it's, from a safety standpoint, I have no idea why it was really ever installed. I don't know why, it's really not needed, it's been in that condition forever, so it really, I mean, it could just come out and be, so it'd be perfectly fine. So, and then we have, we'll be going, we'll be jumping around a little bit, but we've got. Work up on how's our four corners with the common, how's our Deb Feldman's ditch there to do with some work in front of Carl and Volz.
As long as you're talking about deep ditching, I have a question about that area, cause that gets really muddy.
By?
I've got all four corners, five corners area there.
Yeah.
North end of Hathaway Road, Common Road.
Right.
Can anything there be ditched deeper to stop that or to reduce that?
Yes, you're talking more on Hathaway, that, that.
And also that little section that gets to the four corners from Hathaway.
Yeah, yeah, that's a tough one because of the house, because of Eric's house right there, maybe, you know, nothing we could do on that side of the road. The other side of the road, the water's pretty much trapped there, there's no culvert or anything, it's basically a retention pond. The water has to evaporate, you've noticed in the spring, it, it is usually a powder, it has to, it has to evaporate.
Cause you can't send it over to Carl's property on the other side.
Correct, which I've already reached out to Carl in regards to Deb's issue, because there's really no place to send that water either. So we're kinda working on some sort of a solution to, to alleviate that without turning it from Deb's problem to Carl's problem.
Yeah. And the end of Hathaway Road there?
Yeah.
Is there anything?
That definitely on the list, I don't wanna say that'll get done this year, but it probably won't. But yeah, that whole flat from down below your place, all the way up through the ditches need to be redone and the road. What's really, I think the biggest issue there is just lack of material, there's really no material, if those are the gray, we're into. The bigger nuggets, that, like the two and a half inch, that's more of a base material that.
That's more expensive than the ditching, I would say.
Correct, yes, yes, so, yeah, it's definitely on the list.
My driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, ditching gravel. Any other smart guys?
Hell, we should probably, you know, we're already, we're already way over budget on the pickup, but it's. Sitting out in the clouds, brought up for inspection and it needs all new ball joints in the front and. After they do that, it'll have to be realigned and.
What year is this situation?
Two thousand eleven.
Fifty two thousand eleven.
So, that's probably not a really cheap repair, so we'll just continue to back up. The dollars amount on that, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of those to look at.
I figured it would probably be. Worth trying to get another year out of it. In hindsight, it definitely cost more than it was worth trying to keep it, but. I've never had a pickup before, we didn't have much to go on, so.
Yeah, I think that's been used, I think in the future, when you're looking to replace that, you might wanna think about something a little bit.
Yeah.
Bigger, different, yeah.
Different setup, yeah.
Speaking of which, just to think about, at some point we should have a conversation about capital needs, so, you know, to start making your list and. What's important, what is it, when?
Any other questions for Martin or Martin for us, or? Is that it?
We're supposed to look at, well, look at Raymon, some trees up there with Raymon at some point.
Okay, unless they're different, I've probably looked at them with them already.
But maybe it's just.
We're on this tile wall.
Yeah, that rock wall, they talked to you.
Well, I think about a year ago.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
And I told him he could cut the trees, yeah.
Maybe he's looking for us.
I mean, I don't think there's anything that's a danger.
No, I don't think that's on the road. No, I think that just, if we do the work in that area, maybe we can get them down, but I don't know why is that sitting there, probably his, but.
Yeah, I think he was gonna do it all himself, he wants somebody to just maybe talk to. Able to make sure we're all set, Jason said that he mentioned to him that he was looking to repair the wall or do something.
Yeah, I think he's looking to get it aesthetically more, you know, defined and, and whatnot there, so.
I think he wanted to talk, I didn't understand this part, but I think he wanted to talk to you about whether the road needed to shift at all to do that.
Okay.
I didn't quite follow that.
It's prob, just in, just going off of past dialogue that I've had with him, he's probably. Concerned because the road has kind of encroached somewhat towards the wall, so he's probably just looking to get it shaped back up. Where it needs to be.
Off this wall.
Yes, I think so.
That's why, I was wondering why he really wanted something like a tree, gotta be something else there. Which I actually, our road's only up to his wall, I guess we don't want that either.
Yeah, I think.
He didn't say that.
I guess, I guess we had a tire fiasco this weekend, we dumped a bunch of tires off there and broke, I think it's been cleaned up. What I've been told, so.
Or did someone figure out and did it?
Yeah, like, yeah, the state police were involved, so they've got them, but they're cleaned up now, so. I was looking at it and saying, oh great, I'm being cleaned up, thirty tires on.
Was it thirty tires?
It was a good size pile, it was the probably halfway up.
Up the hill?
Yeah.
Up the little hill?
Yeah, not, not in the hill, but around, like if you were doing a loop.
Oh, okay.
Where they have the little circle spot.
Something like that, I mean, who, who are the people that do these, those type of things? Did they check for the sun that's lost, the little people that get the sun?
They're not that great. Especially in the middle of the day when people are going up the road and you get seen doing it.
It's weird, it's like, everybody that drives that loop, they, oh, love it, cause they like to be outdoors, you know, love to, you know, like the nature and everything. And as they're doing it, they're throwing their beer cans out. You know, it's like, yeah, look at that, fuck, just throw the beer can, it's just back around somewhere, you know, it's crazy. You know, they don't, they don't put the two things together, you know.
Yeah, and they just continue to abuse it and it costs us a lot of money and aggravation, yeah. That's too bad, a lot of things, figure that out, they did, so, we're in good shape on that, but.
On the farm, I'm pretty set, we'll have to obviously get going on budget season here. A little concerned about my budget, it's a little bit high for this same time, I think, in past years, but. Well, that'll be offset by some of the grants and whatnot. So, chloride, things like that are gonna be over the pickup.
It's not your hours, your hours are under.
Yeah, no, hours are good, it's been working out really well, actually, I think it's worked out great to have stuff on that, it's kept the hour, the work time down.
Yep.
So, we all had a little bit this last pay period, just with workload, with people on vacation and. Whatnot, trying to get stuff finished up for that, Lynch Hill meeting and whatnot.
I wanna say that's the first time you've had overtime this summer, though.
I think so, pretty much.
We'll keep that up and, uh, don't let it break the work.
Heartbeat, it won't break.
All right, well, thanks a lot, Mike, how are we gonna make it?
It's one tomorrow.
Well, John, thank you for taking time down tonight, we started everybody with loss. So what we've done tonight, John, just to give you kind of a recap, just the obvious stuff, Eric pitched you payment. There was a nice, a nice report on the Network Recreation District. I think Katrina took good notes, so, we'll announce that for you. The list of work, so one of the things that you will see in the packet over there is the quote, you should see the quotes. For the list of work. And there's also, did you get a copy?
Yeah.
Here's a copy of what the salary, what we could pay the average in the last eight years here.
Okay.
This right here, this figure includes this year, which was a little abnormal, was unusual because of the maps, so this is throughout all the map work.
Okay.
And this twenty six hundred, that's the difference of Network's old contract and what their new contract would be. So this ten thousand, whatever it is here, their old contract, and Katrina's gonna get a copy of it, is around eighty one hundred.
Okay.
So that's the difference there, and so they were looking for an additional twenty six hundred dollars to do, if you will, this amount of work here that's being done. So there's potential savings there.
Yeah.
One of the things that we've talked about is, you know, they wanted to have the little blisters as that base in the town for someone to talk to and, and to take the calls, so. We, we, we didn't take any actions at all, we just basically got the information, we'll wait for a little bit more, Katrina, and then we'll get into a little bit more.
Okay.
Point far retained while we just finished up, Martin looking into guard rail for us on that.
Okay.
Katrina put a nice town hall chair table rental agreement, which I think is a small pile as well, and we accepted that. And then you heard Martin, so that's, that's been leaving so far.
Okay.
I think about the only thing that we have to do is we can look at the invoices here, public. Arena and then we'll go into a executive session to discuss the county administrator replacement business.
Okay.
And of course, most of this other business.
Yes, John and I had one piece of new business from the finance committee. And the very short version is that we have a lot of money sitting in an extremely low yield account, waiting for select board action. We're getting something like point zero five percent or something like that, so we can fix that very easily. Sharon was nice enough to look at what's available out there, a reasonable sample of what's available. This would have to be split up because we'd be looking for it at the N C insurance, but an example would be. As a twelve month, no penalty CD, where you can pull the funds out at any time, that pays one point two five percent. And also any, anything that we can identify as a no-brainer as sitting around for nine months, that's paying two percent. So, interest rates are at a point where now it's, there's significant difference between the plan savings account and taking.
Yeah.
A better deal, so what John and I wanted to ask is for the select board to give permission to the finance committee to. We're meeting them tomorrow, to do something better than, something with no risk. That is appreciably better than the savings account we have now. So.
As long as there's no risk, I don't see any.
Yeah.
How much money are you talking about?
That depends on the cash flow, what Sharon says is available, but approximately.
I mean, but bottom line is that just for regular savings in our general fund, one and a quarter percent is what Northfield Savings Bank is paying on savings.
As opposed to the one kind of rating right now?
Yeah.
Point zero zero.
Zero.
That's illegal.
Yeah.
Essentially, all you have to do is ask.
Yeah.
Yeah. And community bank actually, and then, yeah, I mean, their C D rates, like ninety K C D is point seven six percent, I mean.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
And that's real money, hundreds of dollars.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So, if you can come up with a motion, John or Jason.
So it's probably better than I, it's true.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I, I would, I would make the motion to move five hundred thousand into the nine-month C D that's paying two percent. And the rest of it into the savings account, or maybe.
I was, I was thinking of leaving that to the finance committee tomorrow.
I was gonna say, maybe not, don't panic tomorrow.
Well, no, the finance committee can't, can't make that decision, because that has to be the selection.
Okay, so we cannot allow the finance, can we do a motion to allow the finance committee to make that decision?
Based on certain parameters?
What, what I'm concerned of is, at this point, we don't know the free cash flow, we need to have Cheryl involved in saying how much.
Oh, right.
Or, or, we could do that.
Yeah, 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 I would feel more comfortable that way.
So, to five hundred thousand?
Yeah, yeah. But we also, I mean, we also have, you know, the balance of it, there's no reason why.
You make it up to a million.
Yeah, we could make it up to a million, I guess, or we could at least get it into savings at the one and a quarter percent.
I think that's where, in that motion, where you would allow yourself that flexibility.
Okay.
Up to a million dollars with the.
Are you generally, you're moving from one bank to the other?
Well, that's the first thing that we have to do.
Yeah.
Right.
You're going from community to savings.
That is correct.
Well, can we go entirely to one bank or do we have F D I C limits to consider?
You're right, we would have to, we would have to split it up. So, I believe it's a. I think it's two, is it two hundred thousand, what did Cheryl say? It might, it might even be as, as much as five hundred.
But there are other tricks too, because you've got, if you have different, different accounts, sometime, you know, Cheryl would know.
Right, right, right.
If you were to feel it could help us, but the, the point of the motion would be that we would keep it F D I C insured, which I think keeps it out of the ready market account.
That's.
I like that language, keeping it F D I C insured.
Right, right. Okay.
So you want to see that all?
I should back up, because I think the first motion is to move our money to Northfield Savings Bank. Okay, I mean, we can set up different accounts within Northfield Savings Bank.
I, I think, I think we want to move it to other F D I C insured accounts.
Right.
And that may be Northfield Savings Bank or several banks.
Right, okay. So I guess, so I guess.
Isn't it all in community bank now?
It's all in community bank, right?
So I can move it all to one other bank?
I don't, I don't see any reason why you can't, it, it, because it's, my understanding is that the F D I C insurance has to do with the accounts themselves. So I think all the accounts can be within the same bank.
So how does it work now, we have one general fund account of law at Community, that doesn't...
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Are you...
There's, there's, there's one account for the savings, savings reserve and everything else, I mean, they're like sub-accounts, but I mean, it's still just one account with Community.
Then we are not fully FDIC insured right now as well as getting 0.05%?
No, I, I believe we are.
You believe we are, okay.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I'm sure that, I know we are.
It's like a savings number, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
But many of them don't have much money, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
So that...
So, I mean, then, maybe my motion then would actually would be that we move the money out of Community Bank into Northfield Savings Bank and/or, or, and any other banks that are gonna give us better rates. Simple as that. Yeah, as long as everything's FDIC insured.
That's it.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? On paper, vote aye? Aye. Any to vote?
And instead of saying move money, we can move town funds? Do you want to just take general like that?
All right, well, that sounds like you guys already did a good job, you've already gained us at least a point, maybe you are. Anything else, just on that?
No.
All right, so let's do it.
I just wanted to make sure, Callie probably filled, filled everybody in on the, on Lynchell. And was Cheryl here earlier?
No, she's not here this week.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, I didn't realize that. Anyway, so, did you fill them in on the stormwater master plan?
I have not, because I wasn't at the last meeting.
Okay, then, I mean, I, I didn't bring that stuff, because I thought Cheryl would...
I can just send out email if you want.
Yeah, yeah, that would be fine. I mean, we identified, we identified the five most important projects, and they're all right, right here. You know, I mean, basically, you have the storm drains, the town hall, doing some more work there to keep the water out of the basement, whatever has to be done there. And the parking lot here, so pretty much it's all those things right in the village, but the most important. And, yeah, so that's that, and then the financial committee, and then... It's today's meeting. So, today's meeting with Waterbury Ambulance. What they are asking of Moretown is a per capita charge of $19. We're paying, I believe, $36.20 to Montillier now. So, what we're talking about, and the Chair of Ducksbury Select Board was there as well, and they also don't pay Waterbury anything. And their, their assessment is, let's see, 1,325 is their population. We're not sure in Moretown, they think it's around 300 that are served by Waterbury Ambulance now. And so, the thinking was that if we can expand the Waterbury Ambulance area, we could save money. Over what we're paying Montillier, and maybe even break even, but even, even at $19 for 300 people, I think it, I think it makes sense. So, so I guess, you know, we'd have to talk with Cheryl more to see if we can nail down, you know, what, what the numbers are in Moretown.
We're currently thinking it's a 32% for that.
Yeah, 36, Mark Padewait, who's the executive director, thought it was $36.20.
Is there any sort of analysis of response time to different parts of Moretown from Montillier and Waterbury?
No, but I mean, that certainly would, we would have to take that into consideration, so.
So how, how do you proceed on that?
Well, basically, today's meeting was just to, you know, get the numbers out there and then going back and figuring our budget, pretty much. So I think we kinda have to work on that, and I would say just be talking more with them on issues like response time and so on.
Initiate some, make a conversation with Waterbury, I mean, I'm pretty much aware that you're gonna start subtracting from that.
Right, right.
Do we have any sort of service level agreement with Montillier now?
Oh, yeah, we pay, we pay them.
Yeah, but does that have numbers for expected response time and the like, or it's not that detailed?
I don't know. We haven't looked at that in several years.
It's been a while since I've looked at it, but I haven't looked at it.
So they're talking about, sorry, taking over Montillier's doing?
No, not, not at all, okay? What they wanna do is they want, they wanna charge us, number one, they wanna charge us for who their services are.
So they're already doing it?
They already are.
And then the discussion continued that if their service area became larger, we would...
I mean, they're running, they're running a deficit right now, so I mean... So the whole idea is, is that $19 per capita between Ducksbury and us would make up for that deficit. They're in the hole at 54,700 for this year's budget, so. And that doesn't include dispatch services. Either, so I mean...
And that's, is that motion Yalder, or...
Yeah, Wimby and Cockville, yeah, yeah.
But I mean, the new, as it's getting bigger, a lot of us...
Yeah, yeah, that's true, yeah. So that's probably one reason why they don't have, you know, an established number.
Can you dig up the agreement?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to review that, maybe the next meeting, Katrina could have put 15 minutes so that we can review that. I'm just gonna put them both together so we can figure that out, the job plan. Anything else, Tom?
I don't know, I guess that's it.
Keep it busy. All right, so we have a few things to sign. And this, so you guys know I'm signing the commission agreement, giving us the additional $5,000, talk to that, and then Cheryl, I don't know if you realized, we got that.
Oh, right, yes.
That's another additional.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that one's on the inside?
Yeah. Lucky, should be on way. This looks like a certificate of project completion for the Vermont Municipal Bond for the Town Lodge. Looks like it needs to be reviewed.
Well, this list just reminded me of something. Someone, I don't know if it was our road crew or a contractor, did mowing of the ditches. And did a really wonderful job, I just wanted to clarify that. I saw it hiding here for Howard Fairfield, this roadside mower rental, I don't know if it's with an operator or not, so I don't know.
They ran it one week with a, with a driver.
The first pass was the driver, the second pass was the road crew.
Okay.
Two different types of mowers.
Very well run.
I thought seniors were proved, that's where I noticed that they did a good job.
Yeah, my little one looks great, too. So we need another hundred guys, right now, is anybody who don't know all the new leadership here? It is the year we get a professional one done, so it's, but...
Can we just have it on?
He already quit.
He quit?
Before he started, he doesn't have time.
Oh.
We scheduled seven times and then he said, he says no time.
Just in case. All signs is here. That feels much lighter than where it is for the...
Yeah, it's there.
Happens so quick, doesn't it?
All right, so now, thank you for getting everything. Is there any other business, new business, old business?
I think so.
All right, I will go to the executive session to discuss the town administrator placement business.
You said who?
I'll vote aye.
So I'm gonna lock the door behind me.